I'd like to call to order the February 18th meeting of our Cary Planning and Zoning Board. We will begin by adopting our agenda, and I understand we have a change. So, does someone want to make a motion to change the agenda?
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda with the removal item F1, the rezoning or comprehensive plan amendment for Glen Air.
All right. Any other changes? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries unanimously. We then need to approve several sets of minutes. And I'll tell you what, let's take the both of the work session minutes together. Do we have any changes to either one of those minutes? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve both of them, please.
So moved.
We have a motion from Mr. Miller, a second?
Second.
That was Mr. Shaw.
Or Mr. Shaw, I'm sorry. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Discussion, all those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Next, let's approve the minutes of our January 14th regular meeting. Any corrections?
I'll move that we approve the January 14th regular meeting minutes as published.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. We will next move on to our agenda for this evening, and we're going to begin with some public hearings. And so, I want to give you a little background on how we work the public hearing process. This is slightly different now. The staff is going to introduce each case at the podium on your right, my left. Following that presentation, I will open a public hearing, and then the applicant will have 10 minutes to present details of the case, following which we will allow each speaker that wants to address us as part of the public hearing to come to the motion that is on your left, my right. And they will have five minutes to speak. You'll notice there's a little black box on top of the podium. That black box will have a green light on for the first four and a half minutes. A yellow light will then come on for the remaining 30 minutes, and once the yellow light goes out, a red light will come on. At that point in time, I'm going to ask you to conclude your remarks to make certain it's fair for all other speakers. I'm going to ask you to please be concise. Don't be repetitive. Adhere to our five-minute limit. Please designate a spokesman if you have multiple people that want to address the same topic. And direct comments to the full board rather than individuals. We will not interact with public hearing speakers, but once we close the public hearing, we will come back and ask questions, and we may bring the applicant back to the podium if we have questions for that applicant. I believe that's our background, so let's begin with case 12REZ23, The Boulevard, presented by Ms. Bierman.
Good evening. This is a request to rezone approximately 92 acres owned by the state of North Carolina. The property is located on the north side of Carytown Boulevard, and it's the portion of the property south of Walnut Creek. This vicinity map shows that the site is a portion of a 273-acre parcel that extends north all the way to East Chatham Street. The northern portion of the site includes the Wake Med Soccer Park. You can also see here the existing built portion of Trinity Road, which we'll have some discussion of during the presentation. And Trinity Road is ultimately planned to continue through the northern portion of the property onto East Chatham Street in the future. The I-40 off-ramp is located just to the east of the site. To the west is Adams Elementary School and several multifamily and townhome communities along the western border. Property owners within 400 feet of the site were notified of the public hearing. Notice of the hearing was placed in the Cary News, and the property was posted as required. This shows the existing zoning on the site in the vicinity. The existing zoning is currently office and institutional. The site is also within the Carytown Center Mixed Use Overlay District. The entire overlay district boundary is shown with this blue dashed line. The proposed zoning district is mixed-use district, and as you know, the process for a rezoning to the mixed-use district calls for the initial public hearing to be before the Planning and Zoning Board as opposed to Town Council. And that's the purpose for this hearing this evening. Wanted to just point out a couple of points related to mixed-use zoning, or mixed-use rezonings. Allowable land uses are those that are permitted in the applicable type of activity center, which in this case is a regional activity center. The dimensional standards are established by a preliminary development plan, and a PDP was submitted with this project, and copies of that are, or links to that are included in your staff report. And the general development and design standards of the land development ordinance apply, except where specific modifications are requested. The proposed land uses that are included in this request include up to 400 single-family and townhome units on the portion of the site on the west side of Trinity Road, and non-residential uses that may include commercial, office, retail, or commercial, office, hotel, and restaurant use, and then up to 100 condominium or townhome units as well on the east side of Trinity Road. And there would be a maximum, or a minimum, of two non-residential uses in this portion that would total at least 50,000 square feet. This graphic is taken from the preliminary development plan. It shows a conceptual layout for Pod A, which is the residential component. And you can see in this slide Trinity Road, which we have discussed, the portion that's on the site. There's also a proposed Collector Road that will ultimately connect to Southeast Maynard Road, a right-in, right-out access point from Carytown Boulevard. And also, this area reflects a site that's approximately six acres in size that the applicant proposes to dedicate, as, dedicate to the town for a park site rather than make payment in lieu of dedication. This is also taken from the PDP, and it shows two conceptual layouts for Pod B, which is the non-residential component of the project. The specific dimensional standards are included in the PDP and in the staff report. Generally speaking, the residential lot sizes and setbacks are smaller than those for typical suburban subdivisions, and they reflect the more urban nature of this proposed development. The dimensional standards for Pod B comply with the standards applicable and generally applicable in non-residential zoning districts. The PDP does include several requested modifications to standards. These include reduced streetscape widths along Carytown Boulevard, Trinity Road, and the Collector Street, and also higher acreage limits for the mass grading, which is currently limited in the ordinance to 25 acres at any one time. I would need to note here a discrepancy between the staff report and the plan development document. The requested modification for the grading is totals 60 acres, not 47 acres as summarized in the staff report. There are 47 acres in Pod A, plus 13 acres for the Collector Road that are included in that request, and I just wanted to clarify that is the, the PDP document is the correct number. Also, as I mentioned, the applicant proposes to dedicate parkland rather than make payment in lieu. There's one modification to the comprehensive transportation plan requested, and in this case, the applicant proposes to maintain the existing end of pavement for Trinity Road rather than extend that street further to the property line. And finally, there is a request to modify several aspects of the town's standard specifications and details related to street sections that are incorporated by reference into the land development ordinance. This slide shows photographs that were taken from the inside Wade Development, after which the proposed development is tailored, and basically just is illustrative of some of the modifications to the street sections that are being requested. The land use plan designation for the property is medium-density residential. This request is generally consistent with the land use plan. I would point out, in the context of the mixed-use overlay district and the Carytown Center Regional Activity Center, more intensive development could be supported in this area. There are several stream buffers indicated on Cary GIS maps. Field determination of these factors would be, or these features would be required at the time of the site plan review. The Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources Facilities Master Plan calls for a street-side trail along Trinity Road and Carytown Boulevard, and a greenway along the south side of Walnut Creek. All of these items are included in the proposed development plan. The applicant is also proposing to dedicate the, about six acres of parkland at the southwest corner adjacent to Adams Elementary School. However, staff does not believe that the property offered meets the acceptance criteria due to the shape of the property and the fact that the master plan does not call for a park at this location. The transportation plan shows Carytown Boulevard as an existing major thoroughfare, and Trinity Road as a proposed major thoroughfare. The line in blue indicates the proposed Collector Road that would eventually connect over to Southwest Maynard, or Southeast Maynard Road. A traffic study was conducted. The preliminary development plan does include a commitment to complete the recommended improvements with the exception of the provision of a right turn lane on East Chatham Street at Trinity Road. And there are no existing or planned transit routes that adjoin the site. This concludes staff's presentation. At this time, you can open the public hearing, and the applicant can present additional details regarding the request.
Thank you. At this point, I will open the public hearing, and we're going to begin with the applicant's presentation. Just as a reminder, the applicant has 10 minutes. And I think our timer is, we can adjust the timer to be...
Is that for ten?
Excellent, thank you. I ask you to begin by giving us your name.
Good evening. My name is Steve Leach. I'm with Lennar. Need an address? 909 Aviation Parkway. I want to say good evening to you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Planning and Zoning Board, and I'm, see if I can make a minor adjustment here. I want to begin with thanking staff for their consistent availability, their communication, their many suggestions, and the feedback from staff numerous times that we met with them in developing our PDP and in keeping this case on course for this evening's public hearing. I also want to take just a moment and note that our entire rezoning team is here this evening to answer questions and comments as we proceed throughout the discussion this evening. Briefly, I'd like to introduce them. I have Bob Zumwalt with the John R. McAdams Company, Glenda Top with Glenda S. Top and Associates, Mike Horn with Kim Lee Horn, John Myers with JPM South Development, and Joy Wayman with the North Carolina Department of Administration. Lennar has been a developer and builder in Cary for a number of years, but we are particularly excited about this project because people love living in Cary, especially close to all that Cary has to offer, with its historic downtown area, the Aquatic Center, the Wake Med Soccer Complex, the Cultural Arts Center, the theater renovation project, and the Light Rail Station downtown. For a traditional neighborhood development to really work, it must be close to conveniences like schools and recreation, shopping, and employment centers. What makes this property so exciting is its proximity to each of these and the downtown historic Cary area with all of its charm. Based upon the success of Lennar's award-winning community inside Wade, we understand how to build a true urban community. A traditional neighborhood development that possesses a character and unique identity, a real sense of community and lifestyle built for working families in Cary. With a careful and thoughtful approach to design, details, and execution, Lennar's Inside Wade, which was the model for this property, has just been recognized by the Triangle Business Journal as the top residential community in the Triangle area for 2012, and we are very excited about bringing this kind of momentum and success to Cary. When the Boulevard, excuse me, with your approval and the subsequent approval of Town Council, the Boulevard at completion represents approximately $150 million in new tax base for the town of Cary. This rezoning petition has the support of the Village Green Owners Association and has had no voiced opposition. When the Boulevard is completed, the impact to major roads within the downtown Regional Activities Center will not pose an increased burden to the town of Cary, as many of these existing roads in and around the Boulevard are comprehensive transportation plan targeted improvements. With your affirmation this evening, and as shown on our preliminary development plan, Lennar has agreed to comply with most of the mitigations requested in the transportation impact analysis. Additionally, the Boulevard will introduce an urban buyer attracting young professionals and their families to live, work, and play in the historic downtown area, and with them a renewed sense of energy, vitality, and revenue for nearby businesses. As part of the initial thought process and determination for the best use on the commercial portion of the property, we solicited the opinions of the area's top commercial brokerage firms. Unanimous in their comments, the recommendations for commercial development on the property supports a blend of any or all of the following uses: retail, commercial, restaurant, hotel, and office condo. It is essential to the project's long-term success that the commercial partner develop Pod B with a use that is compatible with the community. We have received interest from commercial developers whose end-users would be compliant under the rezoning and will be an asset to the town, the amenities centers, and the surrounding business and developments. In building the concept plan, the vision for the community is a walkable community with tree-lined streets, sheltered parking, sidewalks, and greenway trails, all designed and built to promote pedestrian connectivity throughout the community, with specific attention paid to streetscapes and parks to encourage pedestrian use, an integrated system of internal parks and open spaces and quiet spaces throughout the community, a blend of product with unique architectural styles that appeal to a wide range of people, income, needs, and uses, an environmentally friendly community with over 30 acres of property reserved for open space and parkland, with access and connections to the town of Cary's greenway systems at the property's edges. The key elements and commitments in this project from us include a unique mix of residential products, creating a diverse streetscape and an interesting and appealing neighborhood, a commercial and retail component of approximately 20% of the usable acreage, parks, open space, and amenities planned for the community with elements such as a pool and clubhouse, a dog park, spray ground, outdoor using areas or living areas, and kids' play areas. The construction of the multipurpose and greenway trails along Trinity Road, Carytown Boulevard, and the Walnut Creek Corridor will leave this project with over 2,500 feet of street-side trails and over 2,100 feet of greenway trails. Dedication of a 6.3-acre park in the southwest corner of the property, which is adjacent to the existing Adams Elementary School. Construction of several comprehensive traffic plan improvements. Projects defined by the traffic impact analysis and which are agreeable to Lennar include the additional travel lane across the north side of Carytown Boulevard in the entire front edge of the property. Signalization when warranted of the intersection of Carytown Boulevard and Trinity Road. Signalization when warranted of the I-40 East ramp in Carytown Boulevard, and signalization as warranted the I-40 westbound ramp in Carytown Boulevard. The widening of Trinity Road to meet the comprehensive traffic plan, which is a four-lane divided landscape medium. Construction of the Collector Avenue from Trinity Road to the northwestern corner of the property. A right-in and right-out from Carytown Boulevard into the community. Waivers and variances that you will find addressed on the PDP and that are part of tonight's discussion include the reduction of street yard buffers on Carytown Boulevard, precedent for which has already been set with the Retirement Center on the south side of Carytown Boulevard, a reduction of the street yard buffer on Trinity Road, and also for the Collector Avenue along the north property line. Reduction of street tree strips from seven feet to 10 feet, with the inclusion of root barrier systems, and the maintenance of which would be provided by the Property Owners Association. We request an allowance to grade more than 25 acres at one time because of the site's constraints, and because it is a more efficient operation given the topography of the site and the points that we, the tie points along Trinity Road and Carytown Boulevard. We request the street section modifications to support the TND community design, with most of them being in excess of the town's minimum requirements. The intersection improvements at Trinity Road and East Chatham Street, we request a waiver from, given that we have less than 1% at buildout of the project, less than 1% impact on that intersection. We also request a waiver for the extension of Trinity Road from its present terminus to the northern property line. The town of Cary has made an application to the North Carolina Department of Transportation for extension of the Trinity Road to the parking lot E of the Soccer Complex, has funding for that design, but not funding in place just yet for construction. Our understanding is that when that road is extended and approved, or, excuse me, and constructed, that it will be gated and open only for events within the park, special events. The engineering department has also mentioned to us that they would like, or would rather not like to see this road constructed at this time, because they would like to maintain the flexibility for design of the stream crossing and construction of the road, which has not been completed. We would be, of course, more than willing to work with the engineering department as we proceed through our site plan and construction document approval process, and the town proceeds through its process. In closing, we believe we've made every effort to address the questions and concern raised by staff throughout the vetting process of the boulevards for the Boulevard's successful rezoning. Upon approval, the Boulevard will be a project that can be a model for success...
I'm sorry, Mr. Leach, I need to stop. You got, you have the red light.
I had half a sentence left.
Go ahead and finish your...
All right, thank you. A model for successful urban development and positive economic impact for the town of Cary. Thank you for the additional time.
Do we have other speakers that would like to address the public hearing?
I'm Joy Wayman with the State of North Carolina State Property Office. The property before you for rezoning is unique, as the state does not often sell land. The land was identified as surplus to state need, sold in accordance with Session Law 2011-145. The net proceeds of this sale will go to the state's general fund. Following the sale to Lennar, this property will go on the Cary tax base at a projected annual tax base of $150 million at buildout, where currently there is $0, as the state does not pay property taxes. As a condition of the sale, the state as owner has applied for rezoning this 90-acre portion of a 256-acre tract. Another portion of this property is the 158-acre Wake Med Soccer Park, which is leased by the state to the town for a term of 30 years, with an option to renew for an additional 20 years for $1. I respectfully request that you recommend acceptance of the proposed 6.37 acres, which adjoins Adams Elementary School, as parkland dedication, as the state has granted more than 60% of the state's property to the town for use as a park. Also, Wake County's Community Use in Schools program has indicated their desire to preserve the 6.37-acre parcel for a future project at Adams Elementary. In preparation for the sale of this property, the state and the town worked together to break access on Carytown Boulevard for Trinity Road to be built into the property. The state gave the right-of-way to the town. The town was to build the road at no cost to the state, and then dedicate the road to DOT as the first leg of Trinity Road connection that will one day go to North Carolina State University. I believe the Boulevard will benefit in the revitalization of downtown, drive the need for redevelopment of Cary Town Center, bring customers to local businesses, and be an asset to the town. I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other speakers?
My name is Subhasha, and I'm at 111 Kenbira Court, Cary, North Carolina, 27513. And I did receive a notice because I have a small parcel which is within the 400 feet. So, that's the parcel I own right now. It's three-fourths of an acre, and it is currently landlocked. So, when the development is happening, if there was anywhere to get access to the property? Thank you.
Other speakers? Anyone at all? Seeing no one else, I'm going to close the public hearing and open this case up for discussion from the board. Questions?
Could I make one comment?
Sure.
I just, there are a couple of things that I just wanted to comment on related to the applicant's presentation, just for clarification, and also with the materials that you've received that I've briefly looked at. I noticed in the applicant's comments, there was... applicant's presentation, just for clarification, and also with the materials that you've received that I've briefly looked at. I noticed in the applicant's comments, there was, in discussion of the specific amenities that were proposed, there were several examples given of tot lots, a dog park, and several items. I will point out that, where I understand that may be the applicant's intent, but I just want to be clear in terms of what's actually required, that those are examples of some of the amenities that would be there, but there's nothing that guarantees those exact amenities would be part of the development. So I just want to clarify that point. And also, in the materials that were handed out to you, where there's some, particularly some of the illustrations for the, the actual units that are, you know, representative, again, that may well be the applicant's intent with the look of the building, but again, there aren't specific standards that limit it to that, so I just wanted to be, just to clarify those points for context. The other point that I would like to just note, as you've, you know, discussed the item and have your deliberations with it, that given the, with the various modifications to the standards that are included as part of this package, that your action tonight with the recommendation will be just a straight approval, recommendation for approval of denial of the project as a whole. It's a package of the proposals by the applicant, so that you will not have the opportunity to, to vote on the individual items related to the modifications of standards. It's the entire package as a whole. For that reason, if, in the event that you do, as you look at this and on balance, if you have concerns with some of those issues, it would be very helpful to staff and I think helpful to Town Council as this moves forward to state your, any concerns or opinions that you may have about some of those that factor into your decision, but there will not be the opportunity to, to vote individually on those. So I just wanted to clarify that, if you, if that's helpful for your discussion.
Appreciate that, since, since we have a bit of a new process here and we also have some new responsibilities for traffic consideration that we haven't had in the past, it's most helpful for you to clarify those things for us. Thank you. So at this point, do we have questions from the board?
I have some. I think some for the applicant, some for staff. I guess Ms. Beerman, on the grading modification that's requested, would the applicant need to meet all stormwater retention on-site kinds of requirements?
All of the, all of the current requirements would be met with the, with the exception of the amount of grading that would be done at one time.
Thank you. Then I have a couple of traffic questions. I'm sure you didn't expect any traffic questions from anyone here tonight. I guess the first one is, can you help reconcile the need for a turn lane based on the traffic impact study with the applicant's statement that they only generate one percent, that they would only generate one percent of the traffic at the intersection?
The statement made by the applicant is true. There is a very small minority of, of site traffic come from this development that would be using East Chatham Street. The way our particular ordinance at the time that they modeled this study after was that if the level of service or delay at that particular intersection fell below level of service D, then they had to mitigate back to pre-existing conditions, so to speak. So even a small amount of traffic generated by this traffic that going through this intersection does have a small impact to the delay and the level of service. So the right-turn lane was what was considered by our consultants as kind of a least disruptive type of improvement to get the level of service or delay back to pre-existing conditions. So there are issues involved with the state and the railroad to whether we can construct a right-turn lane there or even possible signalization if they choose to go with that route. So there are still some issues that have not been fully vetted out, but we can acknowledge that there is a minority amount of traffic going through this intersection.
Thank you, that's helpful. And could you expand on the Trinity Road extension and the request by the applicant not to do that? The staff report indicates that eventually somebody may still have to do that and pay for it.
Yeah, I think, when, when the, when the town constructed the road, you know, in two thousand and five through two thousand and seven, I think somewhere in that area, we stopped short of Crabtree Creek. Didn't want to encroach in the buffer, we didn't have any desire to extend the road into Wake Med Soccer Park or even extend it on to East Chatham Road. There's been some thoroughfare issues with, you know, trying to extend it all the way to East Chatham Street because, given the proximity of the railroad and the alignment, you know, an at-grade crossing probably at East Chatham Street is probably not gonna, not gonna be palatable. So there are still some long-range thoroughfare planning issues that have to be resolved. So basically, the road stopped short of the creek. They, their request is not to extend the road as would be required of any normal development to, to their property line, which would be the creek. As stated, there's some, there's some issues with, well, from their perspective, it just doesn't make any sense. I think the town, you know, they've had some conversations with, with the transportation staff and the director, and again, I think we could acknowledge that, you know, extending the road to the center line of the creek doesn't make sense. Gives us a lot more flexibility in the future if we want to reroute that thoroughfare through the Wake Med Soccer Park. Also gives us some flexibility on how we design the creek crossing, whether with a culvert or a bridge. So I think we can agree that, that we share some of the common concerns with doing that. What we haven't quite agreed upon is responsibility of who pays for that. And certainly, we would love to work with the applicant if they could introduce some sort of acknowledgement or, or something that's, that's firmly vetted out in the, in the rezoning as a, as a commitment on their part to, to share in the cost of that. And that could either be making a payment in lieu of some sort, or they could work with the town if and when, whenever we, we do a project to extend the road, that they help participate in that cost. So that's the one, one part that really hasn't been fully vetted, so, and certainly the applicant may be willing to, to offer some more things to you tonight on that.
Also very helpful, thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up on that one?
Sure.
When you get off, because that's a, that's an interesting topic. Do you have a sense of, you mentioned we'd like a payment in lieu of some sort. The town's interest is that we get a payment in lieu if indeed that extension is not built today. Do you have any idea what that is?
I don't have any numbers on that. The applicant may have some, what they, they think it would cost to extend the road to their, to their property line, but I do know that, that the town, as part of our possible design project to extend the road into Wake Med Soccer Park, we're looking at somewhere around, you know, one-point-three to one-point-seven million dollars to do. Obviously, a lot of that is, you know, on the Wake Med Soccer Park side, so proportionally, you know, I'm assuming that their improvement would probably be in the three, four-hundred-thousand-dollar range, maybe, somewhere in that area, if I had to guess. But they can certainly, they can certainly confirm that with you all, but I have not run any numbers on that, no.
What I'm really not trying to nail down here is, you have a valid concern that somebody's going to have to pay for this road once we figure out exactly how the road is sorted out. We don't have it sorted out today, but I don't know how the applicant can address your concern unless we get some idea of what that payment needs to be.
Well, our normal, our normal code requirement would be, would be the, would be the full pavement for extension of the road from its current terminus to the center line of the creek. Their, their engineer would, would draft up a cost estimate of what that would be. We would validate it through staff, and then that would be, in a normal payment-in-lieu route, is what the, what the applicant would have to pay. We don't set that. They can, they could offer something, you know, of lesser value that the council could consider, if that's what they choose to do. But that's, that's how we, we, we expect the full value of what it would cost to extend the road all the way to the center.
So is it normal for that to also happen during site plan, or?
Correct, yeah. It's, through a rezoning, it's very, you know, we rarely do that because we don't, normally we don't take up site issues like that.
Right, so that's happening at the site plan phase.
They certainly could, you know, this, this could be, again, it's normal process would be a payment-in-lieu, which is allowed under our LDO, would generally be considered during a site plan request, yeah.
Okay, this is where you need to educate us a little bit, because we have some new rules now with the repeal of our adequate public facilities ordinance. If we approve this rezoning and they go to site plan, do we have any mechanism to ensure that payment in lieu is made? It used to be the APF did that for us, but we're told now that we have to consider it at this point, right?
Well, I think that's why, that's why they've offered these, these concessions to, for your consideration tonight, is that this may be, this may be your only opportunity to, to get those. We certainly couldn't have, under our current APF, we couldn't require the traffic study until a site plan, but again, with the changes, with the, with the repeal of the APF ordinance now, that, you know, there, there may be cases where you don't see that going forward. So, let's-
That's a, that's a CTP.
Let me see if I got an accurate-
If you want to add anything to that.
I'm not, let me see if I have an accurate understanding of your answer. Because we no longer have an APF ordinance, this is our last chance to ensure that we are made whole, excuse the term, but made whole on the cost of this Trinity Road extension. Is that correct or not?
If I can step us back for a minute, if you don't mind. The actual repeal of the APFO is irrelevant to this matter. Of course, it doesn't take effect until March first, anyway. But what the applicant is asking for here is that as part of the rezoning, they have a condition that they not have to do a payment in lieu. And so they're asking now that they not extend the road and not do a payment in lieu, and if that's approved as part of the rezoning, it's not going to be reviewed at site plan regardless of what our ordinances are or aren't at the time of site plan approval.
I see.
So site plan is essentially irrelevant here, and so they're asking you to approve tonight that they not have to pay, to not have to extend the road and not have to do the payment in lieu as part of the rezoning.
Okay. Thank, thank you, that does help a little bit, I think.
She says it much better.
Mr. Miller, I interrupted you a long time ago.
Well, I'm sure everyone's, I just have one more question, it's actually for the applicant. If, and it's about the grading, if that helps who you want to have. You had mentioned that the grading process would be more efficient with the proposal to exceed the twenty-five acres in our ordinance, and because of the topography, which I understand, I guess my question is, is it not feasible to do the grading, you know, at, at twenty-five acres, perhaps two or even three passes?
It is far more economically feasible to do the site as one and then to stabilize the phases that we wouldn't be, be building vertically beyond that.
Okay.
And the reasons for that, in large part, are because of the grades that we tie to from the high points on the property, on the western property line to Carytown Boulevard, and then out to Trinity, and then up to the Collector. It creates some hardships and difficulties on the site that make it very, very tough to manage that grading process if we were to break it up into phases.
I understand. Thank you. That's all I have for now.
Can I ask a follow-up on that one?
You're the chair. You get to pick and choose.
Rather than bounce back and forth, I think it may be as helpful to dig into each one of these issues as they come up. We have a grading standard in Cary. I think it, first of all, would be helpful if you would remind us what that grading standard says and how it, it, this particular request varies from that standard.
The standard is twenty-five acres that could be graded at one time, so there, that twenty-five acres would be graded and then stabilized before you would move on to the next area. So at any given point in time, there would be no more than twenty-five acres that would be, that would be disturbed in that way. If, for example, if something were to happen and the project were not to move forward or were to stop for some reason, then your, your limit of exposure of having land that had been graded and stabilized would be twenty-five acres as opposed to a larger area. What the applicant is requesting with this would allow that amount to go up to sixty
And we define, where did the twenty-five acres come from originally? Was that just the number we picked out of the hat, or is there some science behind it?
I can't speak to that, perhaps. I don't know if anyone from engineering can work with that, but there, there was an ordinance amendment that was done a couple of years ago that, that established that limit. I think there were some, some concerns with, with having that larger unlimited area of what could be disturbed at any one time.
Oh, I seem to recall that discussion, and so I really am hoping you-
Mary's correct, there was a study task force a couple of years ago that looked at tree clearing, grading, other related things. I don't know where the exact, can't remember exactly where the twenty-five came from, but likely it was a compromise between less and more and was settled at twenty-five.
And was the motivation-
It was, it was intended for, in this case, for medium, certain residential developments over certain densities. Single-family was limited to clearing within the lots themselves, and then for higher-density development, there was an understanding that you wouldn't do lot-by-lot clearing, that you would have to clear and create development areas, and so there was an agreed-upon limit of twenty-five. We'd have to go back and see where that, that number came from. I don't think it's tied to any, any special magic.
And as Ms. Beerman said, I think you indicated that the reason for the limit on clearing was to ensure we didn't end up with a scalped parcel with nothing on it.
Yeah, I mean, historically, in Cary and other communities, you sometimes get graded sites and, you know, it may take a while, even without an economic downturn, to be able to see a project move forward. So I think that was the, sort of more of an aesthetic. You can control the stormwater and the erosion and things regardless of how much you clear, but it was really more of an aesthetic consideration, I think, than anything else.
And, and so in asking for mitigation of this, we really need to reflect on the likelihood of the project happening, which I think there's a good track record that suggests these guys are going to build this on, right?
You factor that in and other considerations, topography, road network, you know, those are the kinds of things.
Okay. Thank you. Were you done, Mr. Miller? I did have to do a second time.
But all right.
Other questions?
Yes. I had one related to the grading, if I could ask that. Would you, is that okay?
You go ahead and ask yours, I have a grading question, too.
Okay. So under, so Lochmere and Preston and some of those larger developments were not, did not have this twenty-five acre requirement, that's fairly recent. And have we seen other developments come through? Like, you know, I was thinking about our board, and we, we haven't seen large-scale planned communities like the board of the eighties and the nineties had seen. And so, you know, so that, so applying that under what has been typically infill-type smaller parcels, you know, hasn't been constraining. So I'm just, I'm just wondering, you know, how those, you know, what, what really is the difference here between?
That's true, and I think really the reaction to this was some of the development and activity that was seen out in the West. So in the large planned developments in, in a Cary Park or Amberly, the Del Webb portion of that and whatever, I think really that was sort of, the, the regulation evolved from seeing that much clearing and grading occurring on real sites. So it wasn't theoretical, it was a reaction to that happening in larger projects. I think the development in the Lochmears and some of the other developments, even the way things were graded, even in those master plan communities, was different at the time with more different builders and, you know, custom kind of construction than you would have with today's residential housing construction anyway. So I don't know that you can necessarily compare that it was done that way in those developments. Today, those probably would have been cleared. It was the, the construction technique is different than the, maybe the nature of the developments. But we haven't seen, we haven't had lots of large-scale developments in Cary, except out in the West, northwest.
Yeah, and this doesn't have the same sightlines and the same visibility and the same, same aesthetic qualities that the West has, where you have, you know, long views of the horizon and, you know, rural. This all seems fairly sheltered to me.
The question on grading I had was, since the ordinance was adopted, has, is there any precedent for a waiver? Has there been a waiver granted before?
To my knowledge, the, the regulation is just applied, it is administered by the, or enforced by the engineering staff, and my understanding is that the developments are just made to comply with this. In this particular case where we have the planned development- In this particular case, where we have the planned development, in the planned development standards, and in the standards for the mixed-use district, where there is some flexibility to ask for reduced standards, this is one of the areas that...so, that's in the context of this type of development, where you have more flexibility and modification of standards is where these requests come about. In just a typical development that wasn't in a PDD district or in a MXD district, they...there's not even the option to really ask for that waiver through this rezoning process.
Got a question. Traffic laws?
Please.
The two signals on the on-off ramps for US 40, to be determined at a subsequent point in time, by whom and what is going to be the determining factors? Because I understand the level of service is pretty poor at both of those right now.
Yeah, right now, there's probably some need for a signal right now at the eastbound ramps, particularly during the peak hours. What I...what we've told the developer, and this is not to be in coordination with NC DOT, since they manage that interchange, what we do is probably during their site plan submissions, we would probably have check-in points during their plans to stop and have them do a warrant analysis, see whether signals would be warranted, and if they met enough warrants for a signal. And if they did, then they would have to begin making plans for putting that signal in. If it didn't, they'd be allowed to continue forward with development a little bit further. But again, before they get to the end, we'll probably hit those warrants for signals based on the study that's been done to date.
So, that becomes some joint decision between three parties?
It probably is going to become a decision between the towns, state DOT, and we'll work with the applicant on an appropriate phasing plan of when those check-in points would be.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's not...that's fairly typical of some of the larger developments that we've had. We've had to allow them to do some amount of phasing before. Again, because we...particularly the signal at Trinity and their main entrance on Cary Town, obviously, there's no need for a signal today, but there's going to have to be some traffic coming in out of the development for a signal to even be considered.
Mr. Rogers, can I ask a follow-up on your question? Certainly, ma'am. Mitigations for I-40. You indicated that those will be considered again at site plan, but without APF, do we have any mechanism at site plan to require them?
Again, I think in the context of the zoning case, they've actually are making a commitment to put signals there when they are warranted. So, that this...
Okay. So, we have that commitment in this...
Everything that was...that was the traffic study that was outlined, they are in agreement to doing all of those, and those are actually on their sketch plan that they have submitted as part of this rezoning case. So, it is a commitment on their part to do that. The only one that hasn't been committed to was the one at Trinity at East Chatham. So, we will...that will be all part of their site plans going forward.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarification.
Mr. Warner, you've been very patient and kind.
Thank you. In regard to lights, would there be a requirement to have a light at Trinity Road, for example? A signal?
At their main, Trinity Road at Cary Town?
Correct.
Yeah, there is...there is a, based on the study, a need for a traffic signal there during the build-out of that particular development, and we would work with them to determine when the appropriate time to install that signal would be.
Because I see a potential safety issue based on the fact that you have upwards to 500 residential units, and I see the inclination of a number of those residents wanting to visit the shopping center and to allow for safe passage across, you know, a four-lane highway would be a concern.
Yeah, and I think that's kind of a testimony to how the applicant has crafted this commitments that they're willing to make based on the traffic study that they've committed to do. So, that kind of goes into your consideration of if they kind of handle the traffic impacts from their development on the adjacent roadway system, and some things that you use to consider on approval or denial of the zoning case. So, I think they've been careful to try to take care of their needs from their traffic.
On the same issue of that traffic light at Trinity in Cary Town Park, how long would it be before a traffic signal? How much could...how many homes would be built before you put in a traffic signal?
That's a little bit tough to tell you. I would say they could probably...and again, it hasn't been studied, other than, you know, it was studied at full build-out, so we don't have what, you know, various iterations of incrementally, how much can you add to it before you need a signal. I would say that probably, you know, they can get probably, you know, a quarter to a half of their residential done before we'd ask for them to do a warrant analysis. Then we allow them maybe to do another 30% or 40%. I definitely think that if they had a commercial builder coming in on the commercial track, that's probably going to be the tipping point where a signal really ought to be put in right away. That'll probably generate much more traffic than the residential.
Right. What concerns me is people making a left turn out of this project to get access to go on I-40 in either direction. I think that was more than 50% of the traffic coming from the residential portion. And even a small number, each time a car goes and makes a left turn, that without a signal, with the amount of traffic that would be on Cary Town Parkway, Cary Town Road, would be a problem, a danger, even if it's not a whole lot of traffic.
Right. Well, we would, like, again, as we have check-in points, we're doing a full signal warrant analysis. There has to be a minimum amount of side street traffic coming out before we can justify a signal. So, once it hits that minimum threshold, we'll ask them to begin putting in that signal.
Okay. And then also, Maynard, Northeast Maynard and Chatham Road, I noticed that Level E is projected for that, and there's no mitigation planned for it. Is any mitigation that could be done for that?
It may have been Level Service E, but I think they may have been at their full build-out was the same as what their pre-existing was. So, that may be. I'm not aware of that was even...the other thing you also have to understand is that Cary has two different transportation zones, one's in the central and one's in the base. In the central zone, which is basically the downtown core inside the Maynard Loop, our actual level service threshold is not Level Service D, it's Level Service F. So, that's probably why you did not see any mitigations shown there, because that's in that downtown central district, and we allow a much lower level of service than the peripheral areas of town.
Yeah. It is shown as D for background and E for build.
Right. Again, it goes back to that level, you know, our expectations in the downtown core is Level Service F. So, that's why they did not feel the need to offer any commitments for any improvements there at that intersection.
And the traffic study was based on 400 residences?
Correct.
And...but we're looking at the possibility of up to 500? Is that correct?
Well, there's...there is the possibility for some additional residential units in Pod B. The traffic study also included an assumption of 200,000 square feet of commercial area in the Pod B area. There are a number of different uses, including some additional residential uses, particularly like second-floor condominium-type uses above retail. When the actual uses would come in for Pod B, that traffic, whether it's the, you know, has a residential component or whatever component, non-residential and residential, would be looked at in view of that yield for the 200...the assumption of the 200,000 square feet of non-residential. So, those numbers are incorporated into the assumptions for the Pod B component.
But there is a big difference in the timing for retail versus residential, the timing and the direction.
But at the time when, if a site plan was, you know, were to be prepared for that area, then that would be taken into account at that time.
And did I notice as a possibility of hotel in that area, was that taken into consideration in the traffic study, or was that just lumped in with the 200,000 square feet?
Just lumped in, as far as the traffic numbers were. They used a worst...what they could consider a worst-case land use in that particular pod, which was shopping center, retail. Hotel would be much less traffic-intensive. Same thing as residential, be much less traffic-intensive than a retail portion of it, and that's why they, you know...
And if, for some reason, they did come in with a combination of uses that exceeded that 200,000 trip bank, then they would need to do a new traffic study, come in and make some changes to take that into account.
And this is more of a staff question, planning people. The, as I understand it, council, if council approves this rezoning, it automatically as part of that package would be approving all of these waiver requests?
That's correct.
So, we would take that into consideration in our recommendation?
Yes. Yeah, that was the topic of my comments before, where you don't look at each individual one and take a separate action on it, but you take all of the components into account, and there may be some that you have concerns with, and I think the issue is to balance out those...balance out the concerns so that you make the decision on whole, do you think that it's a project that you would want to recommend approval of or not? And if not, then it would be very helpful to know some of the...if there's some reasons for that that affect some of those requirements, it would be good for staff to know that so that in the event that there are any changes, but when it goes to council that would address any of those issues, that council would know what your thinking was in making that recommendation so that there could be a possibility, anyway, if there were some changes, that it may not warrant having to come back for another public hearing if your intent was clear.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else down here?
I have one more question.
Oh, please, Mr. Speaker.
If they were required to build to the property line, that would be requiring like half a bridge, right? Because the property line is right in the middle of the creek.
It would technically be half, yeah, half a stream crossing. Right now, we're considering putting a culvert in instead of a bridge, but again, that hasn't been fully vetted yet.
Does the town get to make that decision, or does DOT have to make that decision?
Well, it's ultimately going to be taken over by DOT for maintenance, so they would have some say in it, yes.
Okay. So, they could say...
I think from a cost perspect...
So, we could say a culvert would be okay, but they could say a bridge is required.
Right. From a cost perspective, a culvert, I think, was cheaper, but again, when you do that, you have stream impacts and mitigations, whereas a bridge may not have those impacts. So, you have to take that into consideration, too, when you're costing it out, you know, from a cost standpoint. The other thing is, we also have a pedestrian trail on it that we have to cross the road, and we don't want it to be at grade, so we'll be adding in probably a pedestrian culvert or something of that nature as well, or have them route underneath the bridge. We just haven't...we really haven't even gotten into the design yet of it. Those are just some ideas that we're kind of formulating right now.
But all the greenways up into the park are still part of the plan?
They're required to construct the street-side trails on Cary Town Boulevard and Trinity Road.
Okay.
With the street-side trail, well, and also the greenway trail along the creek.
Okay.
Even if the road isn't...Trinity isn't continued, then the street-side trail would continue on to connect up with the greenway.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
Other questions? I just have a couple, then. Want to come back to the payment in lieu for the park issue. My understanding is the applicant, and his request is suggesting that southwest corner of the property be his payment in lieu of normal PRCR park payments. Is that correct?
They are proposing to dedicate...or offering to dedicate parkland in that location as in all...rather than make payment in lieu of dedication.
Got it. And that area that he wants to dedicate, your position is that we really don't want that as part of our park system, or help me understand where our position is?
Yeah, I would have their parks and recreation staff come up and speak to that question.
That would be helpful.
Let's see.
We've looked at our...as you know, we've recently approved our updated park and rec master plan this past fall, and we didn't have a park side in that general area that was needed. We have the Walnut Street Park, Dunham Park, Lions Park. That served the level of service area, so we weren't needing a park in that area.
Okay. What I'm really trying to get at is, does the dedication of this land provide value to Cary in terms of our parks' master plan?
And because it's not on our master plan, we're saying it doesn't have the value. We have other areas where we're needing parkland.
And if we didn't allow this in lieu of a payment in lieu, how much would the payment be?
I don't know what the appraised value of the land is, but it was six acres?
Approximately six.
Six acres, so if it's $100,000, there's $600,000 in fees right there.
To be clear here, so there's a $600,000 payment that they're asking to not pay?
And I believe the applicant was saying this would be a portion of their payment in lieu fee, so it may not be the whole portion. So, depending on how many of the four...if they build all 400 units, they may owe additional fees beyond that, but that would be a portion of their...what the applicant is proposing.
It sounds pretty fuzzy to me. I mean, if there's a certain amount of money that they would pay for parks, and we don't value the land that they're trying to set aside in lieu of that payment, then what will they pay? And I'm not sure we know, right?
Well, we do know the...like, we have the 1/35th of an acre per dwelling unit. We have those standards, and based on however many units are actually built, we would calculate out that fee, and then we would deduct out the acreage that they were dedicating if that was approved by the board and council, and then their final fee would be calculated.
I see. So, they're effectively asking for credit for the six acres against whatever the payment would be in the future.
Yes.
But they also mentioned that they've already dedicated a fairly large chunk of property for the soccer park.
Or we have a lease for the soccer park.
We have a pretty favorable lease.
Yes.
I think it's a buck a year.
Or a buck total.
Or a buck total.
For all the years.
So, that's a pretty big park dedication, I would think, given the fact that the applicant is still a state of North Carolina, right?
Right. And the town's responsible for all maintenance and all improvements at the soccer park.
And you consider that part of our parks' master plan, right?
Yes.
So, they can probably make a case that they've already made a pretty big parks' commitment to Cary with the soccer park already that is adjacent to this parcel. Just want to get this clear in my head.
Yes. And...but what we don't know is, at the end of that lease, would that parkland go away? Would something happen to it? And so, then with those residents who were expecting that parkland, did not have that ability also to use the Wake County soccer park.
That helps some, I think.
Can I ask a follow-up on that topic?
Please, please, yes.
But was it...and this is for the applicant, was it my understanding that there's...there are some discussions with Wake County schools about that adjacent parcel being used as part of the Henry Adams complex and available for that use? And...
Wake County's community...
Wake County's community use and school program, and you'll get the letter, which is a partnership between Wake County Parks Recreation and Open Space and the Wake County Public School System, has indicated their desire to preserve this land, that 6.37 acres that could be utilized for community schools and parks, combination along with the town. My understanding is there's also money that the town can apply for a grant for to move this park. It's a good use of this land. The 6.37 acres is right next to Adams Elementary School. I hope that you will consider accepting this as a portion of their fee in lieu of. It's not all of it. And, and I appreciate your consideration that the state, we feel, has given our fair share.
And then I believe I had one other question, and it's getting back to something that was very early in the discussion, the streetscapes. And I understand streetscapes in the interior of this project are a little bit unique because of the character of the project. What I really want to talk about is the streetscapes on Carytown Boulevard, which is going to really visually and, and noise wise, sound wise, protect residents in this new development from the noise of a fairly major street. Can you tell me about the, the exceptions that are made in the streetscapes, particularly along Carytown Boulevard, please?
On Carytown Boulevard, the, the starting point for the streetscape on, because it's limited access, is 100 feet. There is a 50-foot requirement along the exit ramps. And I think with some other, in the past, I think the 50 feet has been determined to apply for, you know, some of this section along this short portion of Carytown Boulevard. And looking closer at the ordinance with this, however, we realize that technically the ordinance calls, does call for 100 feet along this area, so that is the starting point. The applicant has requested a reduction to 50 feet, which is actually consistent with what has been approved in, in the vicinity along Carytown Boulevard in this area in the past. Within that 50 feet, because there is a street side trail on the north side, rather than the standard sidewalk, when the street side trail goes in, that will clear an area of about 14 feet maximum that, that could occur completely within that 50-foot width. A portion of that could also occur, you know, outside into the right of way, because the, the intent of the street side trail is to meander. There's the, a 10-foot trail plus an additional two feet on each side as part of the easement for construction, the shoulder. And that trail can meander, it can meander in and out of the right of way, or portions of it in and out of the right of way. But the worst case scenario with that would be, within that 50 feet, there would be 14-foot area that would be, that would be disturbed to accommodate the town's requirement for the street side trail.
And that's consistent with what we've done in the past as well?
Uh, yes, that's actually consistent with what was done. In terms of the 50-foot width, that's consistent with what was done across the street at the Cary, Cary residence. Forget the exact name of the project.
Senior project?
Yes, yes.
Can I ask a follow up to that?
Please.
So the difference between a street side trail and sidewalk is, street side trail is like an asphalt?
It's asphalt, it's 10 feet, it's, it meanders.
Okay, and there's expected that there's some woods between the curb and the, and where that paving is coming through?
There, there could be.
Okay.
Bob Zummel with John Armour Adams Company. Just one other thing I wanted to mention along Cary Town is that we will, we are, we will be supplementing the plantings to a type A level. And then also something that's not very obvious, unless you're zoomed way in, there's between 30 and 50 feet of existing vegetation out in the Carytown Boulevard right of way, that even after full widening of our frontage, about 40 feet of that would still remain undisturbed. Now, that doesn't say someday DOT could decide to change their minds and do something completely different with that street. But it does play into the, to the whole streetscape there, that there will be 30 to 40 feet in the right of way of vegetation, plus another 50 outside of that. And the one across the street, I believe, was just reduced to 30. So we're just trying to, you know, I just wanted to paint that whole picture. It seems a little skewed to just think it's 50, because it probably will remain a lot greater than that for a long time to come, so.
Other questions? I have one last one. The gentleman that spoke to us about his landlocked parcel. The access to the landlocked parcel, which I believe is between this site and I-40, if I remember correctly?
Yes, at the, the small corner piece at the.
Give me a little insight into what, what the issue is there.
I believe that that was, that that sliver would have been created at the, at, at some point with I-40 going through, right of way being taken for the road, and a residual piece that at one point would have connected with something across the street, and then was left as a small piece that was not acquired at that time. That would be my assumption with how those, you know, some of those small narrow pieces are located there, adjacent to the right of way. It's not, I, you know, it's, it's just a situation that exists with those pieces of property. I don't know that there's anything to be done with that in, in connection with this or any adjacent development.
It looks like it's on the other side of the creek. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So we probably couldn't provide some sort of access to that property over the creek, or it would be extremely expensive, I would think.
I don't think that would be feasible.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions? Okay, then we come to the point where we need a motion. Usually, we are not this silent as a board.
I'll be happy to make a motion.
Please.
I moved that the board forward case number 12 REZ 23 to the town council with a recommendation for approval to amend the land use plan as proposed.
Second?
We have a motion and a second discussion.
The reason I'm willing to make the motion quite readily is that I'm not really bothered by the things that we're, we've brought up here. The grading issue in my mind is rather minimal, given the financial status of the ultimate developer here. Lennar is a public company, traded, stock's doing well. We've gone through a pretty bad real estate situation. They've got a fairly successful development online on the other side of 40 and Edwards Mill. So the fact that we're ignoring this 25-acre grading restriction seems very minimal in my mind, in terms of the impact. As far as their dedication of the park, I do think that there was some other additional information regarding a baseball program for kids that was being conducted at Adams. And this park would be suitable for that use, extension of that use. The streetscape issue, to me, seems rather minimal when you consider what we decided to do with the retirement home at the corner of the shopping center street there and Carytown Boulevard. So I think this is a worthwhile project, and I hope that my fellow council members will agree with me.
Other comments?
Yes. There's several things about this project that, that concern me. There's some things on the waiver restrictions, which I will address, that I am in favor of, and others that do concern me. But in general, it's a, a matter of the size of the project and the resulting effect on traffic that concerns me the most. The traffic impact is significant. I noticed that it even adds some, although this isn't a problem, but it adds 16 evening trips down as far away on Walnut as Cervant Drive. So it's a, you know, fairly, has a fairly significant effect. The areas that bother me most, however, are Maynard and East Chatham and Chapel Hill Road. Both of those go to a level of service E, which I recognize under the, the roads ordinance is not a, you know, allowable. However, considering the location with the railroad tracks, I think that is a problem. The evening rush hour, there'll be 48, according to the traffic study, 48 additional northbound trips crossing the railroad tracks during the rush hour period. At present, when a train is going by, there's only room for about two or three cars, depending on how close they get together, waiting for the railroad track to pass. Cars that either want to make a turn off of East Chatham or going straight, which would include the 48 cars, additional cars. We just have to wait for the train to pass. Considering the closeness of the tracks to East Chatham Road, that really disturbs me quite a bit of that additional traffic. Chapel Hill Road, of course, is further away from the track, but it also goes to, from D to a level of service E. That's not, it's maybe within the general area bounded by Maynard Road, but it's certainly not downtown, and it's certainly not where commuters would expect a long wait. And an E is a long wait. So that I consider to be the most significant problems traffic wise. The other problem I see concerns the, the waivers. Now, the waivers, there's some that I think are fine, and I would actually support very much, particularly the not extending Trinity Road to halfway across Walnut Creek, but just leaving that at the existing pavement. I think later perhaps, when a roadway is really needed, that can be considered. I hope it would go with a bridge rather than a culvert, because of disturbing the creek and greenway, particularly disturbing the creek by going down and putting up a culvert. But what I really disagree with on the waiver request is the limit on grading, waiving that. The 25 acres, while as it's been discussed, that's just a number that was probably a compromise. But there is a strong reason for that. Many of us remember the times flying over Lake Jordan and seeing the white plume of silt going out into the lake, resulting from mass grading of some of the projects in the western part of Cary. I would not like to see that kind of thing affecting Walnut Creek. Further with a limit of it being phased, where you do some grading and then do some more grading later, you would give a shorter period of time where it is completely denuded of vegetation. And before new vegetation relating to the buildings and the new homes get established, although that won't be nearly as much as the vegetation that is already there. But if you grade the entire thing at one time, you have greater runoff of silt. You do have the possibility of a lengthy delay with all of that area exposed. And you have a longer period of time without any vegetation in the area before it is going to grow up. So for those reasons in particular, I'm opposed to this and plan to oppose the recommendation.
Other?
Mr. Swannstrom, excuse me. If I may make one comment and clarification before the, at this point in the discussion, regarding one of Mr. Rogers' comments. There is no guarantee that Lennar or any other particular property owner will maintain ownership of the property. That's not a zoning condition. So even though that's clearly the, the intent of what's, you know, and what's being requi, you know, the applicant now is we're moving forward, that there is no guarantee that, that the property couldn't be sold and that that could change. I just wanted to clarify that point.
Thank you. That is a good insight. Other thoughts? Mr. Moore?
I support the proposed rezoning. First of all, I think it is a project that would be an asset to the community. In particular, I really like the walkability aspect of having both residential tied with the commercial. One reservation I do have is the fact that included in the, the pod, what B, I guess, that 100 condo units and/or townhouse units have been included. I would rather see in this project even more retail and the type of, of businesses that would be a benefit to the residential owners. And for that reason, and, and first of all, I've visited the Inside Wade project, and I was extremely impressed with it. I was extremely impressed with the success of a project through a, a pretty significant downturn in the real estate market in this area where they seem to thrive, which is an indication that the market has recognized a quality product and has chose to, to invest their money in that project. So for those reasons, I'm in support of the project and would vote for it.
Other inputs?
I'll make some comments. The, the applicant has requested quite a few variances and modifications and amendments to Cary's land development ordinance, which is carefully crafted and is a large reason of what makes Cary so attractive, is a place for developers to come here and build things. And as a rule, I don't, I don't like that many variances. Although as a rule, those are often done to sort of shoehorn and pack in as much as we can on a piece of property. And I do not believe that is the intent here at all. I also visited the Inside Wade development and saw, you know, a diverse mix of housing, quality development. And, and that's what I would expect to go in here. And, and on balance, I think, you know, most of these variances are good compromises. And in fact, I'll enumerate them based on the list here. I think the land use, dimensional standards, streetscape buffers and street side trails, greenways and parks are all reasonable compromises to achieve something that is innovative and, and something that is desirable and attractive and will be a good community. On the traffic ones, I can probably be had on the turn lane at Chatham, but I am quite concerned about sort of abandoning the responsibility for extending Trinity. I agree, it doesn't make sense to extend it halfway. But to say, well, we're not going to do that, and we're going to leave someone else to pay for it, very likely the taxpayers. I would have rather seen at least something in escrow or some kind of commitment there. And then finally, I'm also very concerned about the grading. You know, we do have stormwater retention rules, and I believe they will be met, although exceptions occur. We've seen one, you know, I personally saw one recently where, you know, things got breached. Although I do expect we will, you know, meet the stormwater standards. But this is almost two and a half times our grading allowance, which is pretty generous at 25 acres to go up to 60. And, you know, just the aesthetics of that, you know, and trying to represent, you know, what the public interest and what the citizens want. I think my two major issues are the grading exception and the not doing anything whatsoever on, on extending Trinity Road. All that said, it, you know, it needs to be balanced. I really wish I could vote that, you know, for everything except those two things. As we've been advised, it's an all or nothing vote. as we've been advised, it's an all or nothing vote. You know, I think this will be a great community. I hope it happens, but looking at what I perceive as the public interest, it's difficult for me to vote for it with those two major concerns. Those are really typical skills for me.
Other comments?
I have one comment. This, the, it's interesting to me that Mr. Rogers and I were the motion in the second because it's our neighborhood. This is my commuting route. These are the streets my husband rides his bike to work on. This is where my kids learn to drive. So the traffic in this area is very, very important to me. And that said, I think that residential provides significantly lower impact on traffic than the currently zoned office and institutional. So for that reason, you know, I think the traffic is a wash for me. And as far as the aesthetics of the grading, you know, I feel the same way. I drive past the site and feel like with the buffers of the 50 feet plus the 30 feet and no visibility from 40, no visibility from Maynard, that, that the aesthetic pieces of it are not, not a concern to me, and I will drive by it every single day, so.
Other observations?
Just a comment on what I feel are charged, my charges here tonight, is to look at the overall suitability of this project, this rezoning, not even necessarily this project, this rezoning to a certain extent on this piece of property. Mixed use in this area, I think, is exactly what, what fits. It's smart, you know, you look, you have residential on one side of Carytown Boulevard and down, you know, in the Sturtevant area, but then you also have mixed use. I will echo that I wish there was more than the, I think it was 50,000 square foot minimum in Pod B, because it seems like we've seen a trend where we give somebody a minimum and then a couple of years later, they come back and say, well, we'd like that, conditions have changed, we'd like that 50 to go to 20. So let's make it 100 because a couple of years from now, somebody's going to ask for 50. Just an observation, but granted, I'm not happy with everything. I mean, grading is one thing, but also grading is hopefully temporary. It's graded and then it's developed. The streets, not so much the traffic, but the street concessions or the waivers, I think the applicant has stepped up to the plate. I'd love to see Trinity go all the way through, but, you know, if you've got six things on the table and they're willing to step up to the plate on five of them, I don't think that's too bad. So all in all, weigh in everything, and I think it's in the interest to support the motion.
Well, I guess it comes down to me. And first of all, regarding the parks dedication, I think that the state of North Carolina gave it the soccer park big time, continues to give big at the soccer park. I believe eventually that this will find a parks-like use, that even though it isn't in our parks plan, it is going to provide a good recreational use either to Wake County schools or to some other purpose. So I think that's just fine. As I said during the earlier discussions, I'm bothered that we don't have some sort of concession on the cost of that Trinity Road stub that won't be built right now. I wish that had been included, and I'm mentioning it here just as a message to the town council and to the developer. Obviously, I'm going to support the project because I think this is exactly what Cary needs right here. This is, these are the kinds of homes that young people are looking to purchase right now. These are the kinds of folks we, you know, I want my kids to come live in Cary, and this is where they would like to live. And I think it's really a pretty brilliant project. So with that said, I, and there are no other comments, we're done, I'm going to call this for a vote. All those in favor of the project, say aye.
Aye.
Please, hands please. Okay, so we have seven. All those opposed?
No.
No.
I think it's six to you.
Six, six to two. Okay, so that, that motion passes with a vote of six to two. And now we come back to our agenda.
Can I, can I ask that we take a brief five-minute recess?
Does anyone have an objection? In that case, we're going to take a five-minute, and let's make it clear here, this is a five-minute, not six-minute recess.
Three and a half with room for sliding into your chair.
Five-minute recess.
Thank you.
Good evening. This case is a request by Glenda Top and Associates to amend the future land use plan designation of 32.68 acres located at 1695 Kildare Farm Road. The subject parcel is located on the east side of Kildare Farm Road, just as it crosses over US Highway 1. And just for reference, this is US 1 here. This is McGregor Village or McGregor Downs subdivision. This is the Wimbledon subdivision here, and the Wake Medical Complex is down here. Here's a zoomed-in view of the subject parcel, and you can see the existing house and outbuildings along with a wooded area to the rear of the lot. Note that there's no access ramp off of US 1 onto Kildare Farm Road. Property owners within 400 feet of the subject property were notified by mail of this CPA request, and the property was posted and advertised according to ordinance requirements. The subject property is currently zoned R40 residential with a minimum lot size of 40,000 square feet. Cary's GIS maps indicate two or more stream buffers may impact this property. A field determination will be required at the time of site plan review. This slide shows that no existing or proposed greenways or trails impact the subject property. Kildare Farm Road is a major thoroughfare with five lanes and a sidewalk on its east side and a 100-foot right-of-way. Future plans are for a four-lane median divided road with sidewalk on both sides still in a 100-foot right-of-way. The subject property is located along an existing C-Trans fixed route, and the current Cary land use plan map for the area shows that the subject property is currently designated for low-to-medium density residential. Low density is defined currently as one to three dwelling units per acre, and medium density is defined as three to eight dwelling units per acre. The LDR to MDR designation recognizes that an appropriate housing type and density could be found somewhere within the overall density range of one to eight units per acre, single-family detached or attached. Within those overall guidelines, the actual types of housing products and density selected for the site will depend on the type of rezoning actually approved for the site. The request before you tonight is a proposal to add office and institutional as another possible future land use, adding to the current land use plan designation of low-to-medium density residential. While the land use plan generally defines office and institutional to include general and professional office space as well as institutional uses, the actual final types of office and institutional uses, if any, selected will depend on the type of zoning approved for the parcel at some future date. At the town council public hearing, two citizens spoke against the CPA citing concerns about increased traffic, access and egress to the site, height, density, and density of potential development, and the thought of unappealing views. There have been other, I have had, received a couple of phone calls, one today and another earlier this week, also speaking about concerns with the CPA. Staff has carefully looked at the site and makes the following comments. "The subject property is bordered on its east side by Kildare Farm Road and on its south side by US Highway 1. Considering the increasing traffic and noise on Kildare Farm Road and especially US Highway 1, the office institutional uses either approved or built on tracks adjacent to the property, both on the east side and on the west side, and the likelihood of increasing medical office demand due to Wake Med's expansion, adding 'office and institutional' to the list of potential uses for the subject property makes sense and gives the developer added flexibility to create the best possible transitional project." The land development ordinance states that proposals to amend the comprehensive plan should meet one or more of the four conditions shown here. "Staff believes that two of the comprehensive plan amendment review criteria have been met. Projections and assumptions for the property have changed with nearby office and institutional development and increased traffic, and this amendment would offer an increased opportunity to make an appropriate transition from the residential development north of the property to the transportation corridors and commercial development south of the property." For these reasons, staff recommends forwarding this case to town council with a recommendation for approval. This concludes staff's presentation, and I believe next is the public hearing.
At this point, I'll open the public hearing and we will begin with the applicant's presentation.
Thank you. Good eve, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning board. My name is Glenda Top with Glenda as Top and Associates. I'm here tonight representing the Kiesler family. The request is to amend the land use plan to add office and institutional as another acceptable land use for the subject property. As staff has just pointed out, the land use designation is currently low-to-medium density residential. Since the adoption of the current land use designation in 1966, there have been changes in assumption and forecast. There has been tremendous growth in office and institutional uses in the vicinity of the subject property. As staff pointed out in their report, Wake Med has nearly doubled in size. We feel that inclusion of office and institutional uses for this property would not only be appropriate for the property itself, but also beneficial to the abutting and proximate properties that would be impacted by the development of the property. Inclusion of office and institutional uses for this property within the land use plan expands the palette of colors that can be used in painting a portrait of proposed development that would help the owners of the property achieve their goals while ensuring that responsible and favorable protections are incorporated into the development plan to benefit and protect the neighbors. The Kiesler family fully recognizes that preparation of a responsible, well-considered development requires a time and significant commitment of resources, both monetary and creative. Having the land use plan amended to include the office and institutional uses is a significant and necessary first step in justifying the commitment of those resources. We have held two neighborhood meetings to present the proposed comprehensive plan amendment. The first one, we invited property owners within 400 feet, and the second neighborhood meeting, we invited those property owners most affected by the proposed amendment, which included the property owners living closest to the Kiesler property. The purpose of the second meeting was twofold, to ensure that the neighbors understood the request and process and to hear the concerns of the neighbors. We explained to the residents that at this time, we are only seeking a comprehensive plan amendment. If the amendment is approved, the next step will be to prepare for the rezoning of the site. This will include identifying specific uses and where and how they will be located on the property. As we move forward with the rezoning, we will meet with the adjacent property owners to go over the proposed plans. We pointed out to the residents that it's important that we have the support of the Wimbledon neighborhood. As staff pointed out, there were several Wimbledon residents who spoke against the proposed amendment at the public hearing. There was also oppositions and concerns voiced at the neighborhood meeting. The concerns raised include buffer and transition adjacent to Wimbledon, increased traffic, building height, safe ingress and egress, and light pollution. We have also heard from residents who live in Wimbledon that have voiced an opinion that office and institutional uses done tastefully at the right location could be more desirable than some of the residential uses that are permitted within the medium-density residential category. The type of office and institutional uses would be defined as part of the rezoning process if the comprehensive plan is amended. These residents are willing to see what comes forth as part of the rezoning process. We explained to the residents that their concerns will come into play whether the use is office and/or residential. As part of the rezoning process, zoning conditions can be offered that address buffer width adjacent to Wimbledon, proposed use, density, height, traffic impacts, lighting, and intensity development. We explained to the neighbors that during the rezoning process, we will work closely with them in the formulation of the zoning conditions to address each concern. Any rezoning on the property will require the appropriate transition from the residents in Wilmington, in Wimbledon. Adding office and institutional uses may increase the potential for a well-planned development on the property. Office and institutional uses may also be more appealing, as I pointed out, than certain residential uses that would be allowed under the higher end of the land use designation. We see the addition of office and institutional land uses as an enhancement to the existing use of permitted uses. Good land use planning principles support office and institutional uses at this location. The property is bordered on the east by Kildare Farm Road and on the south by US Highway 1. Given the proximity of the subject project to these roadways and the likelihood of the continued growth and demand for office and institutional in this area, adding these additional uses to the list of potential land uses for the subject property is appropriate. The Kiesler family asks for your support. And next, Sonny Kiesler, one of the members of the Kiesler family, would like to address you as part of the initial presentation.
Mr. Kiesler, I do need to remind you, we're stuck within the 10-minute applicant period.
Thank you. Very brief. Hello, my name is Sonny Kiesler. I'm representing the Kiesler family, which includes my two sisters and my mother, who will be 94 in July. Approximately 18 months ago, my mother decided to move to Charlotte to a continuing care facility, which set into motion our decision to do what we have to do to get facility, which set into motion our decision to do what we have to do to get this land ready for sale, which means rezoning and the land use plan changed. Our goal during this process, both on the property we're talking here and the land across the road, 3.62 acres we did last year, our goal throughout this process has been twofold. First, of course, we hope to receive fair market value for our land, which has been owned by the Kiesler family for approximately 70 years. Secondly, we hope to secure a buyer who will honor the values that our neighbors have expressed during many meetings we have held with them. As I see it, the essential values that our neighbors are looking at include minimizing traffic on Kildare Road—we know Kildare Road is a busy road as we speak. Secondly, minimizing light pollution. Thirdly, maximizing an agreeance appearance along Kildare Road, so you have some sense of the old care that used to be here years ago. And finally, maximizing visual privacy for those who live in McGregor Downs and those who live in Wimbledon. So from my point of view, those are the four major values that our neighbors have raised our attention. In this regard, approximately 12 years ago, our family approached the North Carolina Cemetery Commission with a request to have the property approved as a cemetery. That would maximize each of these four values, we thought. However, our family only owned 29.7 acres. We have to have 30 acres for a cemetery, so our proposal was turned down. I have mentioned to the town staff a time or so whether the town would like to acquire this land for a park, a farmer's market, or something of that nature as an informal request. But as of today, we've only been approached by private parties who want to purchase this land for more intensive urban uses. Going back 10 years in time, these parties have stressed the following uses. One is empty nester housing, people who are getting ready to move into assisted living or independent living and then have proximity to the hospital. So empty nester housing has always been one of the uses. The other has been independent living and assisted living. So that's been pretty much what we've been requested over the past 10 years. So in our opinion, that seems to be what the market is looking at, and that's what we are looking at. To have that, though, you have to have O&amp;I, office and institutional. Doesn't necessarily mean the office is there, but as I understand it, assisted living, perhaps independent living, continuing care requires O&amp;I designation. We think that might be the best way to go, not only because the market seems to be pointing us in that direction, but also I think that would help us honor our neighbors' values. One, people who live in assisted living or independent living don't drive very much. I watched my mother, and where she lives in the Carriage Club in Charlotte, hardly anybody drives. Not many people usually are outside walking, for that matter. Secondly, this would give us a way to minimize lighting. We have to stay within the limits of the town and insurance companies, but we will make sure that lighting is shielded and not too obnoxious. Thirdly, we think this would be a way to help maximize visual privacy for our neighbors, a good screening and so forth. When you have this kind of usage, you can cluster a little bit and have more space left over. And then finally, we think this would help us with our goal of maximizing beautiful landscaping along Kildare Road. Many of you know about Farrington and North Chatham. I live in Chatham County. Farrington is an old farm, but still has some of the farm look to it, and we would like to keep that here on our property, and we think this kind of use could help us achieve that goal. So having said all of that, we request an O&amp;I use. We think that would help us achieve these goals better than medium or low-density residential. Thank you.
Do we have others that would like to address us as part of this public hearing? Come on down.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning and zoning board. My name is Jane Gleason. I live at 109 Lendle Court in the Wimbledon subdivision, and I represent approximately 45 homeowners in the Wimbledon subdivision, although I do not represent the homeowners' association. I would like to begin by saying that we do appreciate the effort that the Kiesler family has made to meet with the neighborhood and the neighbors regarding our concerns, which were originally expressed to the town council on 11013 by having a meeting on 2413. The folks that did attend that meeting appreciated the gesture that was made towards us. However, our position has not changed. We respectfully ask that you deny the Kieslers' request to add office and institutional to the current designation. Furthermore, we would ask that you stringently monitor the project so that the development is kept in the lowest range of low-density residential. The homeowners in the property continue to have concerns. Our concerns are the same as those that we presented to the town council and expressed to the representatives of the Kiesler family on at least two previous meetings, and those concerns are as follows. "We are concerned that allowing a use other than the lowest low-density residential could stress the infrastructure beyond the capability of supporting it. Number two, we are concerned that the impact of the impact of increased traffic, specifically on Kildare Farm Road, Cary Parkway, and the connector Coorsdale Drive, and the general impact of increased traffic in the area. Number three, there are no density limits for the office designation. In other words, if you can park it, you can build it philosophy. Number four, there is limited access to the property. Number five, we are concerned regarding the potential decrease in the property value of all adjacent areas and in the area of development. Number six, we are concerned regarding the environmental impact on the wetlands on the property. Number seven, we have concerns regarding drainage if substantial parking areas are permitted. Next, we are concerned about noise and lighting concerns with medium-density residential and/or office and institutional. Number nine, we have significant concern regarding the possibility of another institutionally-lighted retirement facility similar to the current facility immediately adjacent to our properties. Number 10, we have concerns that increased traffic will cause delay in response time of the adjacent fire station and in access to emergency services at the adjacent hospital. Number 11, concerns that the current residential personality of the area will be irreparably harmed. And number 12, concerns that the quality of life in the area will severely deteriorate." In summary, our primary concerns are in regards to density and safety. We thank you for your time and consideration of this matter, and it is of utmost importance to all of us. Thank you.
Other speakers?
I'm sorry, I didn't have a card. Obviously, I came to listen initially. I am a—
Could we first of all get your name, please?
Raymond Zawadzki. And I'm a long-term resident, 20-year resident of Wimbledon. And if you—I agree with the concerns that were just addressed and point out that in this particular area, there are no institutional—it's all homeowners. And if you let it go to a office or institutional, I'm concerned, just like the other—off Kildar—Cary Parkway, where the older-age residents, the lighting is horrendous. If you drive through Coorsdale Drive, you get towards that area, it's just lit up like—almost like daylight. So those poor residents that back up to that, I don't know how they sleep, to tell you the truth. And I think the same thing could happen here. You have a beautiful resident area on both sides of Kildare Farm Road. Let's keep it that way. Let's keep the institutional and the commercial side on the other side where it belongs. There's nothing there. That's really—why do that? There's a huge office—medical office facility right off of Cary Parkway near Route 1, and it's still being built. I don't see why this has to be extended to this side of Kildare Farm Road. On the other side of the hospital, there's doctors' offices. So you've got plenty of room. I think what they're going to do is they're going to demolish that and probably rebuild that area. So there's plenty of area for medical and other facilities, and what I fear is that the price of homes adjacent to it within the 400-foot area will be degraded severely. Think of your home being degraded, and if you lived there for a number of years and that's what—you put your money into, how would you like an institution put up behind you to degrade your property and value of your property and perhaps light up your area where you have to put night visions—or night-type coverings on your windows so you don't see the light? I invite you to drive through Coorsdale Road and see the impact of the other facility, which is off of Cary Parkway, and make up your mind. So I appreciate what the Kieslers have considered, but there's always exceptions. Exceptions to the buffer. We don't know what the buffer is going to be. All of a sudden, that buffer is going to—because we can't build this, we have to decrease the buffer from 20 to 25 feet. We have bright lights 25 feet from your house. Would you appreciate that? So think of the residents that lived there for 20 years. It will not immediately impact me, because I live on the other side of Wimbledon, but I'm concerned with the beautiful homes that back right up to this property and the impact on those homes. So I thank you for your time and for listening to me.
Do we have anyone else that would like to speak?
No, I didn't. Okay. My name—
Speak into the microphone to your left. There you go. That's it.
Thank you. My name is Rose Creech, and I live at 1606 Kildare Farm Road. We had our home built on Kildare Farm Road, which we purchased from Clyde &amp; Polly Kiesler in 1976. When I moved there, it was like living in the country. There were two lanes of traffic in front of my house. Now there are five. At 6 o'clock in the morning, you hear traffic just zooming up and down. At 2 o'clock, you sit in my house, you hear traffic. All day long, you can hear traffic. I came to the first board meeting of the zone and asked, I was against the rezoning on the west side of Kildare Farm Road due to the amount of increase of traffic. Now, if you rezone the Kiesler land O&amp;I on the other side, what is that going to do to me? I came away from the first meeting feeling like maybe I didn't matter, because I did want to live on Kildare Farm Road. I have lived there a long time. I'm proud of my home. I was always proud to live in Cary. But do I matter that I have a home and all this traffic is there now? I'm sorry, but my heart is very heavy, and I ask you, please, just to stop and think for a minute. If this were your home, what would you want? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak to us? Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, members of the planning and zoning board—
Would you come over to this one here? There you go.
Sorry. Mr. Chairman, members of the planning and zoning board. My name's Bill Daniel. Just very brief comments. I listened to the statements of opposition, and I've heard that at our earlier meetings as well, and they're very heartfelt, I'm sure. I just wanted to point out a couple of things. Anyone familiar with this property will objectively need to recognize that it is impacted by where it is. If you walk this property, there is real road noise from US 1, from Kildare Farm Road. The concern that's been raised about traffic is not just a future concern. There is traffic there now. And if you really get out and walk that property, the—a fair question, I think, would be, would the people that are concerned about impact on their property, would they be willing to live on the Kiesler property adjacent to US 1 and 64 when you hear that roadway noise? It is significant. There's a huge difference between a comp plan amendment and a rezoning. This board knows that very well. You're the experts on that. What we're asking for, or what the Kieslers are asking for in this rezoning, is really, just as Glenda said, a—we want to add to the palette so that when this land is designed, when the development is designed, and a detailed rezoning structured—and we know full well and it's been stated at each of the meetings—we are convinced that any appropriate zoning for this property would be a heavily-conditioned zoning, a zoning that would have specific conditions that address specific concerns. The general concerns about degradation of land values, that can happen with anything. The most significant factor in that, or at least my experience has been, that the most significant factor in whether that happens or not has to do with the intent of the person that is developing the property. And to a large extent, too, with the conscientiousness of the boards that review the plans. I think we're safe on both counts there. The environmental damage, or the environmental—the potential for environmental damage that was mentioned, the traffic, the drainage, noise, lighting, all of those things are things that just cry out for specific conditions at rezoning. There's a big difference between that and what we're asking for. We simply want the comp plan amendment so that we'll know the pieces of the puzzle that we can put together into a proposal for rezoning that I think everyone would welcome and endorse, and that in retrospect, the neighboring residents will be very much in favor of. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address us? Anyone? Saying no one, I will close the public hearing at this time and open the discussion to questions from the board.
I have one.
Mr. Gaston, first.
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, his hand is up first.
For future—not at this point, but at the rezoning stage, since this will be—if I'm understanding this correct—low-to-medium residential and office industrial, right? So it will have both of those two on there. Can this be—and I think somebody—I heard somebody say that the rezoning would be done tastefully and in the right locations. So am I to assume that part of this could be low-to-medium at another point, and then part of it, office?
With this, you could have any range within one to eight units per acre and/or office institutional. So there's no—it could be any of those things.
So when it's rezoned, it's not going to—these five parcels are rezoned to X, and these are rezoned to whatever. I mean, it's—anything within this development area could be residential or office.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. That's all I have.
Mr. Miller, you are next, I think.
Okay. The staff report indicates a 1927 circa 1927 house on the property, which is—I understand is not in the Wake County survey, but it mentions that a Cary survey is underway. Do we know when that survey is projected to finish?
Well, the survey of this property occurred today, and so just—so the surveyor and I—Mr. Kiesler was kind enough to let us go out to the property and walk it, and so we have reviewed— And so we have reviewed it, and we hope to and Mr. Keesler has indicated that he would be willing to talk as when things begin to happen there or as development plans occur, we could continue to talk and at least consider any possibilities we don't know yet for protecting the house or not. There are lots of issues to talk through.
Sure. Thank you.
Are there questions?
I think Mr. Miller is first.
I just want clarification. For an assisted living facility, that is considered office in that's not the medium, the low to medium density, it's the office institutional.
Right, well, that would be something that would be allowed under office and institutional. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Miller, I think you are next.
Shaw.
Mr. Shaw, I'm going to stop doing that. I promise you. Either that or you're going to change your name to Shaw. Whatever works. All right. Mr. Shaw.
Okay, just I have a traffic question for Mr. Jensen. Now, I realize it's no traffic study since this is a comp plan rather than a rezoning, but based on a previous traffic plan, 1448, this was background, cars rush hour going north on Kildare Farm in 2014.
Which study are you referring to?
That was the one for the property on the other side.
On the other side, okay.
TAR 338.
Okay.
So recognizing it might not be quite exactly that, but that's best we have right now. Any access to this property from Kildare Farms Road, I presume, would have to be a right-in, right-out?
Not necessarily. I think they've I think the Keeslers, when they had looked at the property across the street that was rezoned and for office use there, they went to the state DOT, and they looked at possibilities of what kind of access would they be able to get from that road. As you know, on that particular plan, they allowed them to put one full movement driveway in, but the second one they had had to be a right-in, right-out. I would probably envision that if we would want the full movement access lined up with whatever's going to be proposed on this side, it would probably be a full movement median or full movement driveway as well, I would probably envision. Without it, you're probably going to have some ramifications of a lot of U-turn movements in the neighborhoods that probably wouldn't be desirable. So that would all have to be contemplated at site plan stage or some advanced planning of that, so.
Is any reasonable possibility that there would be a signal around that point?
I guess it all depends on the traffic potential that's coming out of this project or the one across the street if it ever begins. So that will have to be looked at. Obviously, if it's a full movement median or a full movement driveway and it meets criteria and warrants for a traffic study to be considered, then certainly that would be something that could be could be looked at.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Warner.
Would retail be allowed under office and institutional zoning?
As an accessory use, you could have up to 20%. The primary use would have to be office, but you could have up to 20% of the floor space be an accessory retail use in that building.
What does accessory retail mean?
Well, not primary, not a primary use. So something that maybe some retail, a small, well, a sandwich shop isn't really retail, but something that people could a dry cleaner or I don't know if that's exactly that, has other ramifications, but other retail, small things that people need to just pick up on their way home from work or in the building, something like that, you could have as an accessory to the office.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? I've got a quick one. My understanding is that DOT is not willing to put a sound wall along US-1 for areas that weren't already built. Is that correct? I'm trying to figure out noise mitigation on US-1 because if you do walk this property, you are on an expressway.
Yeah. I don't know the answer to that. That's maybe I don't know if.
Can you give me a hand with this one? Because the use of this property is gated by how you deal with that US-1 noise, and if DOT is willing to erect a sound wall, it might change the ability for some uses to work there.
Well, I think, you know, when they looked at they looked at when they widened US-1, I believe they looked at the noise issue. And again, since this property was vacant or didn't hit the a certain decibel level that would justify the need for a sound wall, that's why you don't that's why you don't see one now. I wouldn't think they would come in after the fact and retrofit that they just they just wouldn't do that unless they had a had another state TIP project that widened the roadway even further, which then would kick in more requirements for them to review sound levels. So I think probably the better case for this property was, you know, what can they do to help mitigate the noise from their, you know, that may be coming off the highway onto this property? And so.
Thank you.
Hope that answers your question.
You're getting at it. You should try to figure out what could eventually be on this property. And if you stand on it a while, and yes, I did trespass on the property, Mr. Keesler, sorry, you realize that something is going to have to go there that will live with the level of noise that inherently is on the parcel. Thank you.
I do have another question.
Please.
Or a question. Just for clarification, back to the to the question about how this parcel is designated on the plan versus what happens to it when it goes through rezoning. If we approve this and it goes LDR to MDR and/or office to institutional, then next it goes to rezoning, and then aren't we going to have to commit to one of those three uses? Because it sounded in the previous answer like it could be a multitude of those uses on the single parcel. But I'm thinking when it goes to rezoning, it's you have to pick one, right?
Well, because of the and slash or, I think, and the applicant could clarify if I'm wrong, the thought was they would like to be able to do residential or office and institutional or some combination. And with this, they could ask for a zoning that allowed a mix of uses.
But it would be either LDR and office institutional or MDR and office institutional, not all three. Is that correct?
Well.
When it comes through rezoning?
I'm not sure what it will be. They'll craft a rezoning request and within one of our rezoning category, one of our zoning categories.
Right.
And I can't guarantee that you wouldn't see a range of things.
Okay, okay.
Is this is this project we might likely see as MXD?
Right, that's kind of what I'm getting at. Okay.
Mr. Stop, do you have something to say?
Well, I was just going to add, it's not in an over it's not in an overlay district. So the if I understand it, you can't ask for MXD zoning because you're not in the overlay district. I think I think what we have envisioned, the residential would come in and there'd be one residential zoning district that would establish the density and the type of residential. And then you'd have potentially a second designation for an office institutional use. In this particular case, the and again, this is hypothetical, but there is one zoning district that would allow the use of both instead of coming in for like two separate zoning districts. And that is you could come in come in under a planned development district that would allow you to master plan the property and do have a little more flexibility in identifying and tying down what the residential use will be and what the potential institutional use. But it's not an MXD, so you couldn't see what was just before you. But but the PDD could be an option where you could introduce the two uses.
So you could end up with a project that kept the office and institutional along the highway and then had residential against Wimbledon?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that a possibility?
Yes, that's the thought.
Okay.
And that is also how to begin to address the noise on the property.
Right.
As you move to the highway.
And all that would be clear at the time of rezoning, whether that's what it was going to actually look like or not?
Yes, exactly. That would all come with the zoning when it came before you.
And I misspoke by saying mixed zoning.
Sure.
There is a mixed-use zoning. I meant a range of uses.
And would this parcel be something that would qualify for a PDD? It would?
There are enough acres for it to it meets the acreage requirement.
I think we're hearing a pretty clear message here that that if this came back to us as a rezoning, you're probably not going to be putting institutional right up against those houses in Wimbledon.
Chairman.
Yes, please.
Quick question. Does the board have the authority at this stage to put a modification in our motion that the that it would have to it would there would be a requirement for residential along the border with the other residential that's already in place?
I don't believe so because the request before you is just to add office and institutional. It's already allows residential, and I think you'd have to speak to the request before you tonight, which is, may we amend this to add office institutional as a potential land use? And that's really the only question before you tonight. If you wanted, I think that when the zoning came before you is the time when you would put when you would relay your desire to see that type of layout if it weren't if it didn't meet those requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Hearing none, we need a motion.
Could I also just come back?
Unless we have a question from the board, we've closed the public hearing, and so the legal process doesn't let me do that. Unless we have a question from the board that's being answered asked that you can address, we really can't do that.
My idea of just use, if you ask a question about that, I would have an opinion.
As a member of the board, I have a question, and that is, does Mr. Zilinski have any additional concerns he'd like to bring before the board?
We're okay on legal grounds, right? We have a process that is pretty tightly dictated, and I get in a lot of trouble if we don't do it right.
I think just to take further general comment from the public, you would have to reopen the public hearing. And at this time, the public hearing is closed. It's in the board's purview to reopen the public hearing, but you'd have to reopen it to anyone who wished to speak again.
Is it your desire to make a motion to reopen the public hearing?
If I had a specific question, would that be permitted?
I think general board practice is to have questions of the staff and the applicant and not public commenters at the public hearing. Again, I think the method for that would be reopening the public hearing to take additional comment. But I would also point out that this Mr. Zerowski has already spoken, and so I don't think it'd be appropriate to allow someone to speak again and potentially use up more than their five minutes of allotted time.
Ah, that's right. We're restricted on that as well. Apologize, but the laws on this stuff are pretty strict in how we have to do this. And so to call you back, we'd have to give you a second shot at five minutes, and they don't allow me well, they don't allow me to do that. We all work for the attorneys to some extent and don't want to violate the law in this case, okay? Other questions? Did you have a question for the staff?
No, but I'll I'll no.
Okay, do we have a motion then, please? Mr. Warner.
I move that the board forward case number 12 CPA 06 to town council with a recommendation for approval to amend the land use plan as proposed.
Support. Do you have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Well, the reason I am proposing approval is I don't think it is unreasonable for the applicant to request office and institution because I see that strip of land along US-1 as being problematical for any type of reasonable residential development because of the noise factor. But at the same time, I recognize that this is not the last step. I am very concerned about the transition from the residential to the north, and I would be concerned if a proposal came in for rezoning that included nothing but institutional and office, and I would oppose that. I think the transitional between the existing residential with a buffer of residential because when those individuals buy into those properties, they do they do it knowing full and well that there's going to be institutional as part of this overall project and can't be any complaints there. So for that reason, I think that it's a reasonable use of the land, giving the oddity of such a long property line along US-1, and I think having office and institutional uses for that for that portion of the property is reasonable.
Other comments, Mr.?
Yeah, I'd like to explain my second, which mirrors very much Mr. Warner's comments. This is not the final step for this property. It is just the proposed comprehensive plan amendment. And I also kind of not kind of, I do support a proposal that has some sort of transition between the residential. The size of this property when it comes for rezoning has a lot that could go there, and it has a lot of potential negative impacts on that residential. And I'm going to be very, very critical of anything that comes before us for rezoning on this, and I am going to have the residents to the north their best interests at heart. So I wanted to second that, keep the process moving, but when it comes back, I do expect the residents to be taken care of, especially, one comment, one of the values is minimize light pollution. I live in an area that is light polluted, and from a residential standpoint, I can tell you that's a pet peeve of mine. So that's my second.
Other comments?
Yes. I noticed that.
You're going to say I got it right this time. I said, Mr. Shaw, I got it right this time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And Mr. Miller appreciates it more than I do. I noticed that this is pretty much surrounded by residential. That is, on the other side of US-1, it is low-density residential, fairly large lot. To the north is low-density residential. To the west, while it is office institutional, what is closest actually to the property line is residential, is duplexes, is part of a senior living center. And the closest part is the duplexes, not the big building that creates so much of the light. And I also am very concerned and very sympathetic with the person who spoke to us about the traffic and the changes in the nature of Kildare Farm Road. I've heard that very often from many people in the area about how Kildare Farm Road has changed over the years and is not what they thought they were buying into when they bought That said, we're just being asked to add on the various possibilities for development. One more thing, we could still it could still be low-density residential. It could be partially low-density and then partially offices. The zoning would come with conditions, I presume. I believe the applicant has heard us very clearly about our concerns concerning traffic, concerning transition, and the other factors. And I'm sure that will be taken into consideration when a zoning application and conditions are presented to us. So I am in favor of this as far as allowing the additional possibility of office institutional, but keeping in mind that, at least from my- but keeping in mind that, at least from my point of view, very concerned about the traffic, and therefore whatever is proposed, would have to be something with a very low impact on traffic, as well as the proper transition.
Comments?
Go ahead.
I'll punctuate real quickly here. We have a policy to transition uses. Don't like going from a single-family residential to office institutional. As a matter of fact, we resist that with a fear of the plague. I will resist it even more strongly when this comes back with a rezoning. We will have a transition of uses that protects the homeowners through the north if I have any input into that rezoning process.
Thank you. In the matter before us, I support the motion, but I do feel like we have some process questions to hammer out regarding the accessibility of information. I would encourage Mr. Zelinski to make the full breadth of his comments known to the council before this goes before them.
That's a great idea, thank you very much. I'm sorry, I didn't think of that, that's a, you will have a chance to voice your concerns to the council, and I strongly encourage you to do that, or anyone else for that matter.
Just a brief comment, and staff too. Staff will, you'll find staff very helpful. I won't repeat what's been said here, I generally agree with the observations that have been here. Just as a point of illustration, if I understand it correctly, today, without any change to the comprehensive plan, they could propose up to eight acres, eight units per acre, I don't know what the developer acreage is, but 200-plus units could. With the addition of this, they could propose 30 acres of office. I think both of those would be horrible. And I think what this does, as has been said, is give you the opportunity to perhaps, and we should not anticipate this, but put office along US-1, the furthest from Mrs. Creach's property, the furthest from Wimbledon, and have lower-density residential, whatever that may be, you know, closer to those properties. That certainly is the possibility. So I'll just echo what was said. The narrow question here is, should we add an additional possibility of office? I agree that that is reasonable and will support it. Be looking very carefully at the rezoning. I think the concerns expressed by the neighbors are valid, virtually all of them. The traffic, the noise, the lighting, all of those should be addressed, and I'll also say that I was pleased to hear that there's at least investigation of the, what might be a historic structure there. Mr. Kiesler was too modest, his family has, his parents and family have had rich contributions to Cary's history, and if there's something there, I appreciate, you know, looking at the alternatives, but that also is a rezoning question, if there's anything, anything to be done there, so I'll stop there.
If there are no more comments, I'm going to call it to the vote. All those in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I think that motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to our next case, which is a case that does not require a public hearing. You may recall that case 12 REZ 29, Glen Hare, has been pulled, and so we're going to move to case 12 REZ 26, Chatham Point PDD Amendment. Ms. Bearman.
This is a request to modify the zoning conditions that affect approximately three acres in the Chatham Point Plan Development District. This PDD is located at the northeast corner of Old Apex Road and East Chatham Street, or, excuse me, West Chatham Street. The outlined area is the boundary of the entire Chatham Point PDD. Phase 1 is currently developed with 196 multifamily units, and that's per the existing PDD master plan. The phase 2 area is currently undeveloped, except for an existing storm pond, which was designed to serve both phases. The proposed rezoning would primarily change the uses allowed in phase 2. The proposed change to the PDD are summarized in this table. Currently, the master plan calls for 30,000 to 45,000 square feet of office and retail use. The applicant's requesting 59 multifamily residential units and 7,000 to 10,000 square feet of retail and office uses in a mixed-use building. Currently, the height limit applicable to this site is 50 feet, and the applicant is requesting that that be increased to 55 feet. And also, the applicant's requesting a reduction of the streetscape along Old Apex Road and West Chatham Street from 30 feet to 15 feet. In addition, this isn't included on this slide, but there's also a request that's addressed in the staff report for a 20% parking reduction. The applicant did prepare a parking study that's included in the staff report to speak to that. The land use plan designation is mixed-use, and this change was approved in January of this year. Cary GIS maps do show a possible stream buffer on the site. Field determination of this would be finalized through the site plan approval process. There are no planned park or greenway facilities on or adjacent to the site. Both Old Apex Road and West Chatham Street are designated as major thoroughfares. A traffic study was conducted, and a commitment to complete the recommended improvements were included in the PDD document. The improvements recommended are along the frontage, but there were no off-site improvements included. There are no existing or planned future transit routes in the vicinity. This shows the notification map notice was sent to property owners within 400 feet, and the notification was posted on the property, and the public hearing was published in the Cary news. Staff did, early on in the process, receive several calls just requesting general information and clarification on the request, but no protest petitions were received, and there were no speakers at the public hearing other than the applicant. This concludes staff's presentation, and the applicant is also here to speak to the request.
Good evening, my name is Cindy Swartzkopf with Stewart here this evening representing Phillips. Just briefly, wanted to thank Mary and staff for all their help as we've been negotiating this process, and I just wanted to follow up with a brief presentation. Chatham Point PDD was originally approved by the town council in 2006. Since that time, there's been a shift in land use development trends towards more mixed-use products. As noted by staff, this amendment would allow 59 multifamily units and between 7,000 to 10,000 square feet of retail, office, and commercial uses, and a vertically integrated building on the site. The associated comp plan amendment has been approved, it was approved last month by town council. Ms. Bearman did go through the changes from the proposed, in the proposed document, I'd just like to briefly highlight those. Streetscape reduction from 30 to 15 feet along Old Apex and West Chatham Street. This reduction would provide visibility to the ground for retail and allow the developer to pull the building closer to the street, providing an urban context for the development. While the width of the streetscape has been reduced, additional open space over what is code required is being provided on site. For the multifamily component, in the original PDD document, the tract was purely designated for commercial uses. This amendment proposes to add the 59 multifamily residential uses, again, in a vertically integrated mixed-use building. The height request goes from 50 to 55 feet. For loading, according to the LDO, projects with less than 40,000 square feet of commercial space are provided, are required to provide one loading space. Chatham Point Phase 2 will contain less than 10,000 square feet of commercial space. Therefore, a waiver of this requirement is requested. It's anticipated that the non-residential component of the project will be a mixture of office, retail, and potentially a restaurant/coffee shop type use. The office component isn't expected to require any loading or offloading on a regular basis. We expect that the retail and restaurant loading could be accomplished from the adjacent drive aisle, using hand trucks during non-peak times. There's also a parking reduction that's being requested. As the Chatham Point PDD will include complementary land uses with different peak times for parking demand, the number of parking spaces needed on site will be lower than the town's parking ratios for individual uses. In addition, the proposed mix of retail, office, and restaurant and residential uses will result in some vehicles parking on the site, excuse me, parking to visit more than one uses on the site. In summary, the size of the tract is appropriate for an urban mixed-use infill development. Given the growth patterns in the area, a mixed-use development is appropriate for the property. The provision of a mixed-use product will allow, will enable residents of the area to access goods and services by walking. The rest of the design team is here this evening and be happy to answer any questions you have related to the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions?
I have one. I guess I would just ask for staff's observation on the statement about the 20% reduction in parking being justified because of the mix of uses and the vertical mix and so on is...
Well, I think with the, in terms of this, some of the specific uses that were submitted, I don't believe it's worded so that there would be, that there's 7,000 to 10,000 square feet of retail use, but in terms of examples with specific uses of a coffee shop or restaurant, I don't know that the specific conditions wouldn't necessarily limit it to that. There are, you know, with staff's look, look at this, there are some factors that could be taken into account in looking at the traffic study, one being that there would be the, because there's a phase 1 area that has residential units there as well, there are some one-bedroom units, I think, that were, that are proposed, and any, so there may be some opportunities for shared parking, and then, you know, I think anytime when you have a mix of residential and the non-residential uses with the peak times and when businesses are usually open, some capture of internal trips where there may not need to be as much parking, you can certainly take those sorts of things into account.
Thanks. Other questions?
I have a question. The maximum building height, on the north side of that parcel, it's high-density residential. So any building that's within 100 feet of that, isn't that currently capped at 35 feet as opposed to 50 feet?
Well, this, the 35-foot cap is from residential zoning. The adjacent, phase 2 area that's adjacent to this is, is the Plan Development District zoning that's all part of the same PDD district.
So it doesn't qualify as residential zoning, even though it's HDR? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Well, the, it's part of the same development, as opposed to the perimeter of the Plan Development District. It's within, it's internal within the PDD district.
Other questions?
I do have one more. Did you have one of those slides, or do we know if this was impacted by stream buffers of this property? I didn't find it for sure. It just occurred to me, I'm sorry, I don't know.
Here's the slide that, the town's GIS maps do show a stream buffer there. At the, before the site plan would be finalized, there would be a determination made as to whether or not that stream actually exists. There has been some disturbance with the site already, and...
Actually, sir, on April 12th, we received a letter from DWQ noting that the site is not subject to news buffer rules, so the stream is not on site.
Other questions? Someone have a motion for us, please? Usually, we aren't this quiet. Hearing no one else make a motion, I'm going to move that we forward case 12 REZ 26, Chatham Point PDD Amendment, to the town council with a recommendation for approval, based upon its compliance with the comprehensive plan and other... And we have a second from Mr. Warner. Discussion?
I'll just say briefly, I mentioned earlier that variances, modifications to our well-thought-out ordinances tend to bother me. This one, as far as I can tell, does seem to be one of those where we're trying to put a little bit more on the property, and I don't see the fact that we're doing mixed-use vertical, which I think is great, as justification for that, so although it's, I think it's a good project, I think it could be built, and I would like to see it built within our ordinances of streetscape parking and height, existing height, as it was planned for.
I'll support Mr. Miller's statements. I don't, I don't really see a justification for reducing the streetscape here, and we have a lot of people who've developed and wish that their property could be more visible. In general, I really like mixed-use, but this, the area that it's in really doesn't feel urban, and adding one urban piece to it isn't going to make it, make it do that. And then, my other concern is just that's very, very tall for that particular topography where you've got a huge rise off the street on the north side there. So those are my concerns, and I'll be voting against the motion.
I think I have the same concerns. This, it may be a desire to get a more urban feel, but this is suburban area, not an urban area. And we do have our various ordinances for a reason, so I'm reluctant to, for anything that would involve waivers of those, since other people have been able to live within them. I did look carefully at the traffic, and it did stand out that there's one intersection which had failed with Cload Drive and Maynard. However, actually, after looking at the actual numbers from the trip, I realized that that has nothing to do with this project, so it was not a factor in this project. But my opposition would be based on things that others have stated, the fact that we're asking for changes or waivers for modernnesses that other people are able to live with, and the fact that we're trying to turn a more suburban area in a suburb into an urban feel.
Other comments? Well, since I made the motion, I have to say something. As some of you know, I kind of like vertical integration. I like the idea of trying to put people living in spaces above commercial space. If you go out and look at the dirt, go out and look at the parcel, and imagine how this thing is going to look, I think the visual appearance of the setback, the streetscape, is not going to be as severe as you might imagine. I think it actually will play very nicely on this particular lot. Other lots I can think of with the same request, I would never consider approving, but I think in this particular parcel, it can work. And I do think you're going to get some folks that are going to live in a place, they go to a coffee shop in, that they maybe go to their dry cleaners, you know, without getting in their car, I kind of like that. I do think the parking reduction is appropriate, because I think they will get some sharing of parking between the commercial and the residential. So that's why I made the motion. Other comments? In that case, I'm going to call this for a vote. All those in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
So I get that at four? All those opposed, say aye.
No.
No.
Four, so we tie, which means that we don't make a recommendation. I believe that's the last item on our agenda, and so keeping our tradition of having successful motions for adjournment, I'd love to...
I'll move that we adjourn our meeting.
Hardly second.
All those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion carries unanimously, and we have kept our perfect track record.